Mr. Clerk, let's call this meeting of the Providence City Council to order.
Council President Matos.
Present.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo. Councilman Correa. Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Iglesias. Councilwoman Kerwin. Councilwoman La Fortune. Councilwoman Miller. Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Councilman Salvatore. Councilman Taylor. Councilman Yurden. You have 13 present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Invocation is going to be given by Councilman James E. Taylor.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens.
The pleasure of allegiance is going to be led by... Mr. Clerk?
Approval of Minutes, Item 3, Journal of Proceedings Number 18 of the Special Meeting of the City Council Held July 3, 2019.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Move that we waive the reading of Item 3 and approve.
Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of Item Number 3, and this item is going to be approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have it?
Appointments by His Honor the Mayor.
Leader Ryan.
Move that we waive the readings of Items 4 through 8 and receive.
Second.
Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of Item 4 through 8, and these items are going to be received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have it?
Item 9, Communication from His Honor the Mayor, dated July 16.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to waive the reading of Items 9 through 13 and refer to the Committee on Finance.
Second.
The motion has been made on second to waive the readings of Item Number 9 through 13, and those items are going to be referred to the Committee on Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have it?
Appointments by the City Council President, Item 14, Communication.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
I move to waive the reading of Item 14 and 15 and receive.
Second.
Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of Item Number 14 and 15, and these items are going to be received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have it?
Ordinance Second Reading. The following ordinance was in City Council July 18, 2019, read and passed the first time, and is returned for passage the second time. Item 16, An Ordinance Relating to Article 4, Chapter 17, Section 17-192F of the Code of Ordinances: Disability Waiver Request, Tydel Johnson.
Leader Ryan.
Madam President, I move that we pass for the second time on a roll call. Vote Item 16.
Second.
Motion has been made on second to pass Item Number 16 for the second time on a roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo. Councilman Correa. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias. Councilwoman Kerwin. Councilwoman La Fortune. Councilwoman Miller. Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore. Councilman Taylor. Councilman Yurden. You have 12 ayes and two absent, 12 ayes, one absent, and one no. The item passes for the second time on a roll call vote. Presentation of Ordinance, Item 17, Councilwomen Ryan, Harris, and Councilman Taylor, An Ordinance Amending Article 7 of Chapter 21 to the Providence Code of Ordinances entitled Tax Exemption for Certain Property Owned by the Providence Redevelopment Agency.
Refer to Committee on Finance, I'm sorry, Committee on Ordinance.
Presentation of Resolutions, Item 18, Council President Matos, Resolution Authorizing Approval of the Following.
Leader Ryan. Madam President, move that we waive the reading of Items 18 through 21 and refer to the Committee on Finance.
Second.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Madam Council President, I need to recuse myself from Item 18. I'm sorry, the item that, oh, 20, 18 and 20.
Item 8 and 20, 18 and 20. Okay.
So noted.
Thanks. Did you make note of that? All right.
Yes.
So the motion has been made on second to refer the Items 18 through 21 to the Committee on Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have it?
Item 22, Councilman Iglesias, Resolution Renaming the Newtacan Canut Park Recreation Center, the Vincent A., the A. Vincent Iglesias Recreation Center.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to pass Item 22 on a voice vote.
Second.
The motion has been made on second to pass Item Number 22 on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, I request to read the item into the record.
Can I have it? Could you please read the item?
Whereas A. Vincent Iglesias was a lifelong resident of Providence's Silver Lake Neighborhood, and whereas he graduated from La Salle Academy, and upon his graduation, he served his country with distinction during the Korean War, and then attended Bryant College to study business, and whereas he led a life committed to public service and was the Director of Administration for the State of Rhode Island State Equal Opportunity Office and Federal Programs Coordinator, Assistant Director of Administration for the State of Rhode Island, and professional, and the Deputy Clerk to the Rhode Island House of Representatives. He was cited for numerous professional achievements and served as President of the International Personnel Management Association and Executive Board Member of the National Institute of Employment Security. He was a member of the Rhode Island Manpower Service Council, as well as a member of the Commission of Comparable Worth, and whereas he was one of the founders and chairman of the Silver Lake Annex Hope Neighborhood Association for 33 years, and whereas he served as Chairman of the Diocese of Providence Catholic School Board Training Through Placement Program for the Developmentally Disabled, Silver Lake Lions Club, Grand Lodge Columbus State Observance Committee, and served on the St. Bartholomew Church Fundraising Committee, and whereas he was the past President of the St. Bartholomew's Parish School Board, Silver Lake Lions Club, and the Loggia Piave Sons of Italy, and whereas he was also a member of the Hope Council Knights of Columbus, the Rosario Society, the Rhode Island Jimmy Fund, St. Bartholomew's Society, the Italo-American Club, and the Holy Knave Society. He was a lifelong parishioner and lecturer of St. Bartholomew Church, and whereas he was the Secretary of the Providence Civic Center Authority, as well as a member of the Silver Lake Hartford Revitalization Committee, and whereas in 1972 he revitalized a Piave Lodge which had been inactive for years and was elected President, he was eventually elected to the post of trustee of the Rhode Island Grand Lodge Order Sons of Italy and America. In 1993, he was awarded the Loggia Piave Merit Award, and whereas in October of 1986, he was nominated, awarded, and honored as humanitarian, community leader, and neighborhood honoree at the Providence 350 Grand Jubilee Ball, and whereas he led the Citizens Education Committee on Property Tax Reform in 1988, and whereas as a longtime member of the Providence Democratic Committee, he was elected Secretary in 2011 and served in this position until his passing, and whereas he also served as Chairman of the Ward 7th Democratic Committee and continued to serve until his passing, and whereas he was admired and respected by all who knew him, particularly for his political knowledge, and whereas on July 14, 2019, A. Vincent Vinnie/Sony Iglesias passed away at the age of 86, and whereas renaming the Newtacan Canut Park Recreation Center in honor of A. Vincent Iglesias would be a fitting tribute to the life and work of such a dedicated public servant. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Providence does hereby rename the Newtacan Canut Park Recreation Center located at 675 Plainfield Street, the A. Vincent Iglesias Recreation Center. Be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of the resolution will be sent to Mayor Alorsa, the Director of Public Property, and the Director of Parks and Recreation. Be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be sent to the family of A. Vincent Iglesias.
Thank you.
Item 23, Councilwoman Ryan, Resolution.
Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman La Fortune.
If there's no objection from the sponsor, I would like to co-sponsor the resolution, please.
For Item Number 22?
Correct.
Anybody else? Entire City Council? Entire City Council. Thank you, Councilwoman La.
Item 23, Councilwoman Ryan.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to waive the reading of Item 23 and 24 and to pass on a voice vote.
Second.
The motion has been made on seconds to waive the readings of Item Number 23 and 24, and the items are going to pass on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Salvatore. Councilwoman Salvatore, I need to have a mirror here, so.
Thank you. I rise to speak on Item Number 24. I think it's, I think it's fair to say that we've all been saddened by the level of violence that's happened in our city and many of our neighborhoods throughout the summer and throughout the year. I think as a body and as a city, we have to start taking this issue seriously. There are cities across the country who have encountered very similar issues around the nighttime economy and violence, and they have created very creative ways to solve these issues. Over the last several years, beginning with my first term on the council led by Councilman Seth Yurden in the Ordinance Committee, we took a deep dive into what was happening in our downtown regarding violence inside of a lot of the venues that were serving patrons. And we were able to bring the community together and the nighttime economy together to create solutions that made practical sense not only to the folks inside of the clubs, but the club owners. We believed back then that it was important to get these venue owners involved in the conversation since they know their business better than anybody else. What we experienced was a sharp decline in the amount of violence that was happening in our downtown, and we also reduced the amount of resources that we had to divert from other neighborhoods into the downtown. Subsequent to 2012, several years ago, there were two reports that were published or commissioned by the City Council. One was the Bloom-Shapira Report, and then secondly, the Pine Report, which was authored by former Attorney General Jeff Pine. What we learned was there were a lot of deficiencies around the Board of Licenses and efficiencies in what we had to do to make improvements. I'm happy to hear that the Chairman and the current board composition have taken this issue extremely seriously, and they're working diligently to improve those efficiencies and garner best practices from cities and towns from across the country. I think it's extremely important that we receive an update, however, spending $15,000 on another report to learn what we already know or to have our very competent and capable City Solicitor's Office, I don't think this is a prudent way of spending taxpayer dollars at this point. I think $15,000 could be used towards other programs in the city specifically to study an affordable housing program in any one of our wards, okay? Now, when we're deliberating how to spend taxpayer money, I don't think it's again prudent to be duplicative and to say, "Okay, we're going to generate another report," just to say we did some. Why don't we ask the City Solicitor's Office to provide an update to work with the Chair of the Board, who has been extremely resourceful, not only to us as council members, but insightful in terms of where he wants to see the Board move to. So I'm going to vote against Item Number 24. I appreciate the intent, but we've done this already, and I think we have some very capable people in the city who can provide an update for us in terms of where the Board of Licenses is. Thank you.
Councilwoman La Fortune.
Thank you, Council President. I also echo my colleague's sentiment. The other thing that we need to think about is the actual root of some of these issues. We have seen an influx of violence within our city, but we also have to ask ourselves, what is the cause of the violence? What are some resources that we can provide our residents, our young people, to ensure that they're getting the services, the resources that they need, or that they know how to resolve conflict? Our city is in dire need of financial resources. We, our schools are under review right now. Again, as my colleague stated, we have an affordable housing crisis. There are a plethora of issues that we can address and that we need resources to do so. So spending this type of money to hire a consultant, I think, as well, is imprudent. And we should use those resources for other priorities within our city, but also to think about how we can invest in better support initiatives or resources within our communities, such as the Institute of Nonviolence, that teaches young people, as well as adults, our whole community, how to resolve conflict. Because the problem is not just a problem within the nightlife, but it's a problem that's impacting all of our neighborhoods. And we need to look at the root of the problem rather than just focus on one issue, to think about how we can look at the systemic issue that's impacting our community. Thank you. And I too will not be in support of this.
Councilwoman Ryan, Leader Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution for a number of reasons. First and foremost, back when I was a freshman councilwoman, I introduced a similar ordinance, and that ordinance basically led to the reform of the Board of Licensing as we know it today. We've changed the entire board's makeup. We lobbied up the General Assembly to create a new licensing scheme that didn't exist before, prior to this process that we went through, prior to this study. There was one license for all. It made it very difficult for the board to regulate operations in those entertainment facilities and restaurants or for license holders. So there was a big issue, big problems. My colleague had referenced work done by this council. There was work. It was a study that was done in 2012. There was no legislative initiative subsequent to that effort. Subsequent to the Pine Report, which I was proud to lead, it called for a number of reforms. Those recommendations were followed through by this body. There were recommendations for expanding the hours into the evening because people that live in the neighborhoods couldn't manage to take time out of work to attend a licensing hearing, if there was a show cause hearing. There were a number of recommendations regarding training for Board of Licensing members. They didn't exist before. So we put that in place, and we did it, and that was one of the recommendations. We did it through a resolution. We made, we passed a number of ordinances, again, as recommended by the Pine Report. One of them was the Bloom-Shapira Report, which was a completely thorough financial analysis of the Board of Licensing operations. That happened, and, you know, we benefited from the information provided. I think that we can look to this past exercise as a deep dive into the operations of the Board of Licensing. We've come a long way, but obviously, in recent months, with all of the challenges that we've had in our nightlife, we need to do more. We need to go back. That's why we're looking at this. That's why I sponsored it. I've been in conversations with our solicitor. I'm going through the same process that I went through in the past to make sure that it's a comprehensive review. So I will utilize the skill sets of our solicitor, particularly Mario Martin, who is the solicitor assigned to the Board of License. He's made some recommendations for some changes to the licensing laws. We're going to look at that. But the thing that is important about this study is we're engaging in independent analysis, an independent review, and it's money well spent when we're talking about the safety, public safety, in our neighborhoods and our cities. So I encourage my colleagues to support this. It's a good resolution. It's a sound resolution, and it is a continuation of the work that's already been done, in hopes that we will have a roadmap going forward.
The motion has been made.
Madam President, just one last comment, please. I would.
Councilman Salvatore.
Thank you. I would urge the council to hear from the Chair of the Board of Licenses. Again, a lot of improvements have been made in terms of efficiencies and process. Recently, Chairman Conley sent out a report about the direction that he would like to see the Board move in. I think we should afford him the opportunity to appear before the council and address us in terms of what he is doing and what policies he's looking at as practices that he would like to implement to curb a lot of the nighttime violence in our city. Thank you.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan, yeah.
I rise for the second time on this topic according to our rules, and I beg the committee's indulgence, the council's indulgence. The report that the Board of Licensing Chairman does was actually prescribed by the Pine Report. That was added by ordinance, a requirement. There was a date certain that was added, and all of the requirements in that report were specified by ordinance. The number of violations, the repeat offenders, the times that the Board is overturned by DBR. And the interesting thing about the analysis and the comprehensive review that we did was we worked with the Chairman of the Board of Licensing. We worked with community groups. We worked with owners, bar owners, restaurant owners, and got everyone's perspective, and everyone was invited to the table to come up with some meaningful solutions. This again is the basis for what I hope to be more work being done. Hard work has been done on this, and we can't push it aside. The report that the Chairman does now of the Board of Licensing is important. We need to expand on it. Thank you.
Councilwoman La Fortune.
Thank you, Council President. And I do hear Council Ryan's words, but if the, if the Board Chair's report was at the recommendation of the Pine Report, then it sounds like the Board Chair is doing his due diligence, and he's doing exactly what he's supposed to do, looking at various best practices, how we can improve the practices within the licensing board, the procedures, et cetera. If this is a public safety issue, then we should work with our Public Safety Commissioner or our Chief to bring the various nightlife entities together to create some sort of, some sort of safety plan that they can follow or share best practices. And any operational flaws should not be the responsible, responsibility of the Liquor Licensing Board. Those would be two various, two different entities. Again, the resources could be allocated to something that is more of a priority in our city right now, and if we do have a Chair that's doing their due diligence, that is looking at best practices, that are trying to implement these practices into the procedural operations within the Board, then again, it's stating that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So again, we do not need to conduct this study and spend this money on.
Thank you. Public safety is important to me, and I think that using this money to address the violence that has been taking place in the nightclub is a good use of finances. Councilman Yurden.
I just would like to be recorded as voting no on Item 24. Mr. Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, you got that? Motion has been made on second for Items 23 and 24. Any more discussion? Councilwoman Anthony, you say? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Madam President, please hold the record reflected. I will be voting aye on Item 23 and nay on Item 24.
And Councilwoman Anthony, the same. Councilwoman Kerwin, the same.
Councilwoman must stay in.
You're going to stay for?
The vote.
Okay. For both?
No, just for.
Okay. And Councilman Yurden? You say? Okay. All right. Mr. Clerk?
Item 25, Councilman Taylor, Council President Matos, Councilwoman Anthony, Castillo, Councilman Correa, Councilwoman Harris, Councilman Iglesias, Councilwoman Kerwin.
Madam President. Leader Ryan. Motion to waive the reading of Item 25, and also, I have a technical amendment. So the 10th Whereas Clause.
So Leader, we're going to do your motion for the amendments.
Second wave. It's a technical amendment. Say it, second.
Can you read that? Could you please read the amendment?
The technical amendments are the 10th Whereas Clause, striking from after Pico Tribe's Mash, Mash and Tucket Pico Tribe, strike from, in, on the 13th paragraph, strike after awarded in the first line and AN. Other than that, it is fine. Again, they're technical amendments, and I move to pass on, as a voice vote.
Second.
As amended. A motion has been made to pass Item Number 25 as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the item?
Whereas Michael Van Leesten was a longtime resident of Providence who passed away on August 23, 2019 at the age of 80, and whereas he graduated from Hope High School, and upon graduation, he served his nation as a communications specialist in the United States Air Force, and upon discharge, he attended Rhode Island College, where he was a star basketball player. And whereas upon his graduation from Rhode Island College, he became active in the civil rights movement, participated in SCLC Hope Project in Choctaw County, Alabama, and whereas he, along with six other college students, worked doing community organizing and voter registration in rural Alabama during the height of the civil rights struggle, and whereas he spoke of his time in the movement as a defining moment in my life, and whereas he believed that singular experience made him a better person, better husband, better father, and better community leader, and whereas he served as the Executive Director of Opportunities and Industrialization Center, OIC, of Rhode Island, which he helped found for more than 15 years, and whereas he also worked as a consultant as the owner of Van Leesten Associates, and whereas he served as the Director of Planning and Development in Providence, and whereas he then went on to be the Director of Public Affairs for the Mash and Tucket Pequat Tribe, and whereas he resumed his role of the OIC from 2006 until his passing, and whereas he was board member of numerous organizations, including the Board of Regents, Peerless Precision, and Fleet Bank, and whereas he was awarded honorary doctorate degrees from Roger Williams College, Rhode Island College, and the University of Rhode Island, and whereas he is survived by his former spouses Natalie E. Brown, Andrea G. Van Leesten, and Paula Van Leesten, and his loving children Jill, Michael, Ayub, Andrew, Jordan, and Alexis, and his beloved grandchildren Eliza, Erin, Azuber, and Haria, and his siblings Rashad Munir, David Van Leesten, Lisa Van Leesten, and Dorothy Dee Dee Van Leesten, and whereas he was predeceased by his brother Karim Muhammad Ni Hendrik Van Leesten Jr., and both his beloved parents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Providence does hereby recognize and remember the life and legacy of Mr. Michael Van Leesten, and be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Providence extends its deepest condolences to the entire Van Leesten family and Mr. Van Leesten's extended family and friends throughout Providence and beyond.
Madam President?
Councilman Iglesias.
No objection. I'd like to also co-sponsor this item, please.
Councilman Iglesias would like to be listed as a co-sponsor. And Councilwoman, oh, Councilwoman Harris already a sponsor. Councilwoman La Fortune? Anybody else? All right. Thank you. We already voted on this item, and it was approved, passed.
Item 26. Resolution recognizing and remembering the life and legacy of Ms. Mary Lee Smith.
Thank you. Leader Ryan.
I have the technical amendment to item 26, on the ninth Whereas Clause, adding the words "and mother-in-law" after "loving mother" to sons. And I move, we pass item 26 as amended on a voice vote. Second.
Motion has been made to amend item number 26 and to pass item as amended with the technical changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? May I have it? Mr. Clark, could you please read the item to the record?
Whereas Mary Lee Smith was a longtime resident of Providence who departed her earthly bonds on August 20, 2019. And whereas, she graduated from Hope High School, and upon graduation, she attended Rhode Island College and graduated with a Bachelor's of Arts in Urban Studies. And whereas, she led a life committed to public service and was a true child of the social activism movement that arose out of the turmoil of the 1960s. And whereas, she was an active voice in her community, very active in the local political scene in Providence and the state of Rhode Island. And whereas, she was a former member of the Providence School Committee, Rhode Island Board of Education, Black Political Outreach Committee, the 11th Ward Committee, the Public Health Safety Advisory Committee, and was part of the leadership team of the South Providence Neighborhood Association. And whereas, she was admired and respected by all who knew her, particularly for her historical knowledge of the civil rights movement locally. And whereas, she was a tireless advocate for the residents of Roger Williams Housing, the South Side Community, and Oasis International. And whereas, she was an administrative assistant and grant writer at Oasis International until recently, when her health would no longer allow her to do so. And whereas, she was the loving mother and mother-in-law of Theodore and Natalina Smith, and Mariba and Kendra Smith. And whereas, she was a doting grandmother to her four grandchildren, Kali Smith of Providence, Kalasia Smith of North Carolina, Deja Clark, and Nadia Smith of New Hampshire. And whereas, she was the loving sister of Maxine Smith, Eva Simmons, and William Smith, and was predeceased by her sister Brenda Winston. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Providence does hereby recognize and remember the life and legacy of Ms. Mary Lee Smith. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Providence extends its deepest condolences to the entire Smith family and Ms. Smith's extended family and friends throughout Providence and beyond.
Thank you.
Item 27. Councilwoman Salvatore.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Waive reading of item 27 and pass on a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of item number 27, and the item is gonna be passed on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Item 28. Resolution.
Leader Ryan.
Madam President, waive reading of item 28 and refer to the Committee on Public Works.
Second. Motion has been made on seconds to waive the readings of item number 28, and the item is gonna go to the Committee on Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Reports from Committees.
Madam President. Move that we waive the reading of items 29 through 32 and pass on a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of item number 29 through 32, and these items are gonna be passed on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Madam President, I'm recusing on those items. Make him, Madam Clerk.
All of them?
Oh, 31 and 32.
So Councilwoman Iglesias is gonna recuse item 31 through 32.
So noted.
Thank you.
Committee on Finance. Councilman John J. Iglesias, Chairman.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to waive the reading of items 33 through 35 and pass on a voice vote and refer back to the Board of Contracts and Supply.
Second. Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of item number 33 through 35, and these items are gonna be passed on a voice vote, and it's gonna be referred back to the Board of Contracts and Supply. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? May I have it?
Committee on Ordinances. Councilwoman Joan Ryan.
Madam President. Leader Ryan.
Move that we waive the reading of item 36 and pass for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second. Motion has been made on second to waive the reading of item number 36, and the item is gonna be passed for the first time on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo. Councilwoman Correa. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Iglesias. Councilwoman Kerwin. Councilwoman LaFortun. Councilwoman Miller. Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan. Councilman Salvatore. Councilman Taylor. Councilman Jordan. You have 13 ayes, one absent. Matter passes for the first time on a roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilwoman Salvatore, Councilwoman LaFortun. I think it's just those seed, because Councilman Principa and I used to get in trouble all the time. It's that corner. No. I just was thinking of Councilman Principa, that's why. Mr. Clerk?
Transmits the following with recommendation, the same.
Madam President.
Sorry. Sorry. Councilwoman Kerwin, I'm sorry.
Madam President, I'd like to make a point of personal privilege. I would just like to know, yesterday, a group of students, parents, and caregivers filed a motion to intervene in the Rhode Island Department of Education school takeover process. And I wanted to ask that all of us consider this motion that they made very carefully, and consider these stakeholders are represented as legitimate enemies with the right to petition ride in this process. Some of these organizations have been doing this work, organizing throughout the city for years, and this is really hard work. They've been confronting racism in the school staff that doesn't reflect our student body in many cases. They've been grappling with inequities without the resources to find solutions like professional development and increased social and emotional support in our schools. And they've been working on really, really valuable campaigns from counselors, not cops, to ethnic studies requirements, to ending high-stakes testing, and to advocating for things like a student bill of rights and the right to have a civics education. So really, really valuable work, organizations that have kept our schools afloat and have kept been a really integral part of our schools. And I think we need to listen to them. They are asking for the bare minimum. They're just asking for metrics for success, a seat at the table as this turnaround plan is drafted. And they're asking for school staff and teachers that reflect the student body in a role to play in the hiring process of our next superintendent. So I encourage you all to stand with me to support them. I think that their asks are valid. I think their voices need to be heard, and I hope you'll consider the I hope you'll consider the motion that they made with ride yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kerwin. Councilwoman Miller?
Yes, Madam President, point of personal privilege. I want to thank my colleague, Calton Kerwin, for bringing this to our attention. And also, just to really invite all of my colleagues to come to the show cause hearing on September 13th at 10:00 a.m., right down the street, where we'll have a real opportunity to hear some of the students and parents speak for themselves. And I think that really, I really want to urge my colleagues, like, in this process that is happening right now, there is no more important role than we can play on City Council than amplifying and supporting the voice of students, of parents, of people who have been banging on this door for 30 years, right? And have not gotten a chance to be heard. So I really just want to, again, thank my colleague and urge all of us to be there on the 13th and to find ways to amplify these voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Mr. Clerk?
Item 37. Transmits the following with recommendation, the same.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to waive the reading of item 37 and pass on a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made on second to waive the readings of item number 37, and the item is gonna be passed on a voice vote. Councilwoman Anthony?
Yes, I'd just like to say a quick word. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the Ordinance Committee for recommending passage of this ordinance. Green municipal aggregation has proven effective in adding renewable energy to residents' electricity mix while keeping electricity rates competitive and stable, even producing significant savings. We, as a country, state, and city, need to decrease our reliance on fossil fuels. Municipal aggregation is a key crucial piece to this effort, and I urge everyone to support this passage. Thank you.
Councilwoman Castillo? Councilwoman Castillo would like.
So noted.
Councilwoman LaFortun? Would like to be listed as a co-sponsor?
So noted.
Anyone else? All right. A motion has been made on second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
From the clerk's desk, item 38. Petition from Dylan Honley, Esquire Lamar Outdoor Advertising, requesting to amend Article 20, Section 2005, entitled "Nonconforming Signs."
Leader Ryan?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to waive the reading of items 38 through 41 and refer to the Committee on Ordinance.
Second. Motion has been made on seconds to waive the readings of item number 38 to 41 and refer to Committee on Ordinance. Councilwoman Anthony?
May I please be recused from item 39?
Councilwoman Anthony wants to be recused from item number 39. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Item 42. Communications and Reports. Communication from Antonio Moravita, Director of Department of Public Works, dated July 26th.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to waive the reading of item 42 and separately refer to the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits.
Second. Motion has been made on seconds to waive the reading. Can you please withdraw your motion, Leader?
Withdraw my motion on item 42, is that what?
No, she said 42. No, she said 42, I'm sorry. No, she did say 42, you're good, okay. Motion.
Withdraw my second?
So motion has been made on seconds to waive the readings of item number 42, and the item is gonna be referred to the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Communications and Reports. Item 43.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to waive the reading of item 43 and to send to the Committee, to refer to the Committee on Ordinances.
Second. Leader Ryan, you're doing item 43 only? Okay.
Unless the Solicitor has a different opinion? Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So, the motion has been made on second to send item number 43 to the Committee on Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Item 44.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of items 44 and 46 and receive.
Second. Motion has been made on seconds to waive the readings of item number 44 through 46, and these items are gonna be received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? May I have it?
Item 47. Report of the Board of Park Commissioners relative to receipts of certain gifts and monies for the preservation and care of special burial lots in the North Burial Ground.
Motion to pass item 47 on a roll call vote.
Second. Motion has been made on seconds to pass item number 47 on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Council President Matos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo. Councilman Correa. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias. Councilwoman Kerwin. Councilwoman LaFortun. Councilwoman Miller.